I'd like to call to order our city council emergency call meeting for Sunday, March 22nd, 2020, and I'll ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Schinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
We do have a quorum present, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the city interim, Mr. Hank Griffin.
Mayor, if you would, just go ahead and have the clerk read Resolution 2003-14 by caption and approve that one, canceling the meetings, and then I'll take care of the other two.
Sure, sure, okay. Mr. DeNoozer, if you will, read our Resolution R-2003-14 by caption.
A resolution authorizes cancellation of the March 24th, 2020, regular council meeting and the March 23rd, 2020, called council meeting due to an emergency help pandemic caused by COVID-19 coronavirus.
All right, council, you've heard the resolution. Do I have a motion?
Motion reapproved, second.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? All right, clerk, if you're real. Call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. Let's run it back over to Mr. Hank Griffin.
Thank you, mayor. First of all, if I could, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege and thanks to folks that got this meeting together today pretty quickly. First of all, city clerk Bo DeNoozer, Bo came up and got everything together last night for this meeting today, and I appreciate that. And also, city attorney Jimmy Jordan, Mr. Jordan probably spent a whole lot more time on the phone with me on Saturday evening yesterday than he really wanted to, but I appreciate him doing that. And I'd also like to thank Michael Gillett and Georgia College for making sure that our citizens have the opportunity to see this meeting today, real time and live stream. They do that with all of our other meetings, but I called Michael at home last night, just after he had finished dinner, and he immediately agreed to be up here today to make sure that our citizens saw what was going on with this meeting, so I want to thank all three of those. Our first resolution is Resolution R2003-15. If you will, why don't we have the clerk read it by caption, and then we'll discuss it?
A resolution authorizing the mayor and all of the City of Milledgeville to conduct all regular and called meetings via teleconference and/or video conference for a period of 60 days in accordance with the requirements of OCGA Section 50-14-1G and for other purposes.
Obviously, this is a resolution that was brought about because of the COVID-19 coronavirus situation that we're dealing with now. Basically, it is a resolution that will allow us to have city council meetings via teleconference and/or video conference for a period not to exceed the next 60 days. For that, scheduled meetings would be April 14th and 28th, and then May 12th and 26th. You have behind that resolution, should you pass it, a procedure that we have put together that you all will use to teleconference into the city council meetings for that 60-day period and even longer if you all need to extend that or if we have to ask you to extend that. The information there is pretty straightforward, but there's a teleconference phone number that all of you will call in from wherever you are. We will also be streaming the meeting through a new YouTube channel that we've created called the City of Milledgeville YouTube channel. That is provided someone from Georgia College could not be here to stream it, but we tested it here in the chamber using some hardware that we have here in City Hall on Friday, and it streamed well, and you could hear the audio from the teleconference system that we set up. So that would enable our citizens to be able to at least hear what's going on in the meeting that we have to have or use teleconference or video conference in order for that meeting to occur. That's kind of a quick synopsis of what the resolution is about and what we would be doing if the resolution is passed, should we need to, and I'll be happy to take any questions if anybody has any.
If we video conferences, the video portion of it going to be available on YouTube?
Yes, it will, yes, it will. I do not anticipate we will be video conferencing those meetings as far as you all coming into the meeting. Obviously, we will be for it to be streaming to YouTube, and then that video, after it's streamed, will also be archived on our website so people can see that. There is a specific link that is created when we create a planned stream on YouTube, and we can schedule that as much as 30 days out and know what that link is so we can, even before the meeting occurs, we can get the link for the YouTube stream that the citizens can watch out to them, and, like I said, provided no one from Georgia College can come up and use their regular hardware to stream it.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions? Mayor Protem Schinholster's reading, so I'm giving...
I will say, mayor, just while Ms. Schinholster's reading, there are three provisions to this other than authorizing this teleconferencing, video conferencing. You are also authorizing the city manager to take whatever steps necessary to implement that process. The city manager, you're also authorizing him to be able to control, limit the number of people that could actually attend a meeting should you all be gathering together or some of you be gathering together here, most likely, at City Hall. And then, of course, just reemphasizing that the clerk is still required to post all the required notices and notify the media and so forth of these meetings. And this resolution covers not only your meetings, any committee meetings, but also city commissions and boards. Should they so need to meet or choose to meet, they can also do it through teleconference. And that's it, that's basically it.
And we would communicate the teleconference information to those boards before they were scheduled to meet and stream them the same way.
So on a teleconference, you'd be central located right here? Right here or what?
The teleconference would actually be wherever you are with your phone, and the streaming, at least at this point in time, I anticipate would be up here, most likely with me being the one here, but council members could come up if they so choose. Yes, that's correct.
Anyone else? All right, Mr. Griffin. There being our discussion on Resolution R2003-15, we'll ask for a motion to approve, to adopt.
Sound move.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Resolution is approved.
But, Rob?
Sorry.
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution R2003-16 by caption.
Resolution for declaration of state of emergency, establishing citywide curfew, limiting number in attendance for social gatherings and for other purposes.
Mayor, this is a resolution that is a declaration of emergency locally. The resolution covers the reasons for that, and what comes from this declaration is a curfew restricting travel from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. with the exception of persons traveling to and from work, and also that all social gatherings of groups of 10 or more are hereby prohibited, both of those beginning Monday at 12:00 a.m. The public notice that will go out about this, well, let me back up and say, this is the same declaration or contains the same information of the declaration that was passed by the county commissioners at 1:00 this afternoon, and the same public notice that was created by their declaration would be going out from the city, and a copy of that public notice is contained in your packet as well. We did ask the county, and they did agree to put the statement in the public notice about the City of Milledgeville strongly recommending that dining in restaurants where 10 or more diners are seated should be avoided. That is not prohibited at this point in time, but we felt like it was advantageous for us to recommend that to our citizens when they were going about their day-to-day activities.
I want to ask one question, Hank. I know that the grocery stores have been opening early so that senior citizens could go in an hour early, and it's usually before 10:00. Is that, have we talked to any of them?
Well, in the morning, day-to-day activity could begin in the morning at 6:00 a.m., so if they're opening at 10:00 a.m., that would not, this curfew would not affect them.
So, but I thought, the way I was understanding this is that you were trying to have a curfew where no one was on the road unless it was 10 to 6, unless it was work-related.
From, that's correct, from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. the next morning, and if they're opening at 10:00 a.m., if the stores are opening at 7, 8, 9, 10, that's correct, then it would not affect them.
All right.
Ms. Walden, were you also, were you saying the elderly could go into stores earlier? I think that's, all in general, they have a stipulation that they're allowing the elderly to come in at 7 or 8.
A number of them are, number stores are.
We currently, with this public notice, and I assume that comes from this resolution, says while not prohibited at this time, so we have no say-so over gatherings of 10 or more.
We do, in terms of the way the resolution reads, is that all social gatherings of groups of 10 or more people are hereby prohibited. I guess you could call people dining together in a restaurant, social gathering, but I don't know that you could necessarily do that unless all 10 people were in there eating together. So I guess it's really depending on how you define social gathering. Help me out here, legal counsel.
You know, that is, quite frankly, that is in having multiple conversations between the county attorney, and I know Hank, the county manager, that was the language that they wanted to include, and of course, we were kind of swapping some language, you know, some language in particular about the restaurants. So that's what we, in effect, settled on with them, would be the language that we would include in the resolution that we're recommending that you pass, primarily because trying to have two resolutions or notices that mirror each other so, from an enforcement standpoint, our police department, our sheriff's department can be on the same page in doing that. I think they're going to be working pretty closely together in this process, and so we felt like that was important. Now, what Hank did convey, and what I conveyed on his behalf to the county attorney, was that we were probably in favor of recommending you something more stringent than what this wording is, but that in that spirit of cooperating and everybody agreeing to some day, that we would go with this, recommend this to you, with the idea that if the situation warrants additional restrictions, that, you know, we wouldn't hesitate to recommend to you that you put those in place. So this is kind of, let's see where we go from here, clearly with our, the other resolution that you just approved, you know, we can have a meeting really on a moment's notice if we so choose, as long as we can get a form of you on the teleconference and so forth. So that was, that's kind of what's been going on over the last couple of days as far as trying to get us all on the same page, so that enforcement can be hopefully consistent across the county.
Okay.
I guess, let me ask a question. Well, I bet for us to be on the same page for the city and county, I've, you know, a few restaurants, they are open now, they are practicing distance, you know what I'm saying? Which is a good thing, but it might be more than 10 people. What, then, I'm just going by hearsay now. Just say the county said some restaurants are going to have to close. So we saying that they can stay open long and keep practicing the distance and everything? Have they happened to have over 10 people in there?
Yes, I mean, the way this resolution, we're recommending that they not have more than 10 people in there, but it is not part of this prohibition at this point.
Well, my thing is, so ain't no mandatory closure of no restaurant, even in the county, is what I'm saying?
No.
Okay, that's what, all right, that's my main thing.
We're encouraged, you know?
Right.
You guys have been encouraged, the folks that take it, you know, the not dining in and having delivery or having pickup, but there's nothing mandatory in that at this point.
I guess...
How many original public notices did not include anything in there about restaurants? It was only after Mr. Jordan and I talked that we were able to, everybody agreed that the statement as it is now would be put in there.
I guess the confusion comes in, which will come into the public, because there's always a way to get around that, is because it states, be it further ordered that all social gatherings of groups, and that word kind of throw, will throw everything off because anybody can say to 10 friends or more, "Let's go," but we're not a group. I mean, we're there, 10 of us, and then there might be 10 other people, but both of them will say, "Well, we're not a group." Then you have a whole bunch of people in one place. So then, I guess as far as law enforcement is concerned, they're not clear, because this is, this doesn't make it clear that it shouldn't be more than 10 people in there. It just says groups.
The public notice does name some specific groups, as I'm sure you've seen, but you're exactly right, it does not say anything about any type of group in a restaurant.
Yeah, and part of that's going to be the restaurants policy, which is what we're really hoping for, instead of, you know, you dictating what the restaurant can and can't do under the current safety kind of protocol, you know, a lot of these restaurants aren't allowing it anymore anyway.
Yeah, well, I guess I'm taking it from a situation yesterday in Decatur, and they have something very similar to this that says groups, and then you had over 200 people in a restaurant on the Beltway, and they're not groups, but that was just, that was a lot, you know, considering the circumstances, but all of them could say they're not a group. So that's, you know, if anybody decided to gather here, and they're not a group, they're just individuals, it could be 200 people there, and what could anybody say?
Well, the restaurant could.
The restaurant's not going to turn down money, that's what I'm saying, think about it. But they let them in, in the first place, though, that's the thing, that's what I'm telling you, they let them in, in the first place.
I don't know that you can address every situation at this point, you know, we're all kind of feeling our way along, for sure, but...
I know in Fulton County, they came up with a specific that said, "No, you can't open your restaurants any longer," or, and Athens is the same way, but that's why I said this is going to leave us wide open for, and be subject to interpretation.
Right. And that's probably our next step, if it comes to that.
They're getting to the case, like you said.
I know.
If you use or, you know, if anyone takes advantage of it, then, you know, you'll have to revisit.
You'll have to revisit. You know, it's my understanding that none of this is not mandatory, it's at discretion of whoever is in charge of whatever, like the restaurants?
The 10 or more is mandatory.
Right.
And the curfew is mandatory.
Right, but as for locking people up and all this type of stuff over 10?
I ain't saying locking people up.
I know, but I'm just saying...
Locking people up, dude.
No, I'm not saying you, but I'm just saying this, but I'm saying...
That's not saying anything about locking people up, is it? Just making them go home, probably.
And that's probably, more than likely, what they're going to do is ask them to disperse. The restaurant will ask them to disperse, Dr. Lee, they wouldn't, you know, even if the police had to go out there, they would ask them to disperse from the restaurant.
Ask them to disperse, not lock them up.
Right, now, our restaurants are doing a great job of adhering, I mean, basically, they started doing what was necessary way before we could even sit down to the table and talk about this. They're meeting people at the door, curbside service, all those things that they're already doing on their own, but we're just trying to put something in writing to formalize what they're already doing.
I think the other side of the coin that you have to look at also is that business owners are just as concerned about protecting their employees...
They are, thank you.
...as they are, and opening up to a large crowd puts a lot of people in danger, and especially their own, it puts their own liability out there, and, you know, that's why you've seen several, just in the last couple of days, that have shut their doors. It's very difficult to even stay open and operate for just 10 people.
It is, especially with small businesses.
Right.
So, Mr. Jordan and Mr. Hank, with what we're putting in effect to be on the same sheet of music with the county right now, this is just leaving it open that if we had to come back and revisit, say, no dining in, period?
Absolutely, absolutely, that would be within your purview.
Okay.
Any more questions? That's it, I mean, that'd be none, no other questions, or I'll ask the clerk to, I lost my, I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Again, proper motion and second, clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
I don't think we really have a reason to go into closed session, mayor.
I just want to, as information for y'all, to let you know that pursuant to the information I sent all y'all on Monday of procedures that would be triggered with the first confirmed case in our county, the city will be, City Hall and associated buildings on each side of us will be putting those procedures into effect tomorrow. Those are the procedures that I shared with you, and we will certainly be getting that information out to the public, and you all have the pandemic plan in front of you as it currently stands, it's a fluid document as well, as you can well imagine, but we feel like it's solid to the point where we think we may get, and I will continue to communicate information to you all via email when anything in that plan changes.
Did any of the council want to ask any questions concerning this, or wrote this out to a later date and time, Mr.?
Well, one thing I want to say is that I like to give the city manager a little broad range, because, you know, whatever he thinks it takes to protect our workers and the citizens around here, because we might not have time to meet on it, you know, and our main objective is to protect our, you know, our workers, our employees, and to protect the community. So I wonder what we need to do to give him some broader authority, because it's going to be too late, everybody get together, have it or something, you know?
Mr. Jordan, you want?
I'm in about it. I've talked to Hank about that, and going over what his proposed plans are and everything. You know, I believe as the city manager under our charter that he possesses that authority subject to you, in essence, taking it away from him. The only thing that he does not have that, I think we just have to, it's up to you, but I think you have to kind of play this by ear, is the authority to contractually commit the city to whether it's extraordinary purchasing or, you know, some arrangement. That's why, that's why I put in the resolution on the teleconferencing and all that, where you gave him authority to basically do that, to take whatever steps are necessary to implement that.
Okay.
But I think on the other hand, as far as the management of the city and doing what's best for the employees and so forth, he has that authority, again, subject to you defining that authority, you know, whatever, whatever would occur, he does not have the authority to, you know, contract.
That's right, right.
And so, you know, if at some point there are certain areas that you want to permit that, if it presents itself, you can come back and make adjustments. We couldn't really, again, I talked about it, couldn't really, of course, not knowing what the future holds, unfortunately, but couldn't really think of anything that would have been pertinent in that regard, just to...
Well, you know, I guess, I guess he had, what, up to about $2,500, he could just say a case needs masks for everyone or something like that.
I mean, those are, I mean, those are things that, that you have to give some thought and consideration to.
Well, I think we have a credit line up, you know, we have a purchase file up to that, probably sufficient enough, a purchase or something like, you know, I'm just saying in the worst case scenario, that's all.
I'd like to thank Mr. Griffin for the timely manner in which he has taken care of what has gone on.
Absolutely.
I think you've done an outstanding job, and especially with notifying us and keeping us up on what's happening, and I want to thank you for that.
Y'all probably get real tired of your phone ringing and it being from me, but...
I don't.
No, it's not from you that it's, don't get me started on that. No, you only send it one time.
It buzzes about eight times after the first.
After the first one, that's what drives me crazy, is the eight other times after that.
I know y'all appreciate it, you don't necessarily have to tell me, so...
Y'all, all right, all right, thank you, y'all, y'all hear that?
Seriously.
All right, thank you.
She just, she just, she just said, "Thank you for all of y'all, please." I had 37 text messages the one day after y'all finished, I thought, "Oh, my God."
Madam Mayor, I got a couple of things I want to mention.
Madam Mayor, I got a couple of things I want to mention, and there's some things that I've heard within the community, and some of it coming from first responders in the medical community. But one thing that, a little bit concerns me, and it always has about our community, and any communities this size, and so on and so forth, it's the lack of communication between different entities. And I don't mean that we don't communicate, that we don't talk, or anything of that nature, but a lot of times, one entity will decide something, and then pulls the other entity in, and then maybe some are left out, and some don't find out until later, so on and so forth. I think in these unprecedented times, we need to be very proactive about making sure that all entities, and what I'm talking about is the city, the county, the Board of Education, all three colleges, the hospital, public safety, on and on and on, that everybody, whether it's just a simple inclusiveness of being on an email, that it all come together with the thought of everybody in mind. We can think about what we're doing for the city, but we got to think about everybody else and knowing what we're doing for the city. And then that way, maybe they have an idea, maybe they don't, maybe they, it makes them think about something differently. But at least we're all communicating, communicating, we're communicating, how about that, all right? The other thing is that, and this came from somebody at the hospital, and I think there are concerns there, about, you know, I think we probably have space there, but at this point in time, I think there are people that work there that this is a little frightening. And they know they put themselves in harm's way, so on and so forth, but the question was asked if we could think about looking at Central State Hospital and some part of it, as far as trying to set up some type of quarantine area, some type of place for a separate treatment, or screening, or testing, or whatever, so that we don't end up overwhelming the hospital if this were to take off. I hope we never have to do anything like that, but it's just a suggestion, we've got an area out there. Walter and I talked for just a minute, and we both thought about the chapel, and especially the bottom floor, that a triage could be set up down there, and that, you know, it's a place that is kind of, can kind of be secluded, and so on and so forth.
I believe it's the Allen Building out there that they've got, in case a disaster were to happen in Savannah, that they can transport all those.
No longer.
No, ma'am, that would have been the Howell Building years ago, and Howell Building is no longer-
No, actually, it was the Allen Building, but the Allen Building is occupied by admin now, so that's no longer the case. They have, that's an administrative function, and they're, you know, other than, other than the chapel, I'm sitting here thinking-
Yeah, and I'm like you, because my first thought was, I don't know what would even be available out there, or would be in a condition.
Everything else, you'd have to go in there and, whoa.
And this would not be in response to something overwhelming, you know, I don't know what we do in response to overwhelming, but I think it's, it is in response to the fact that if something were to be overwhelming within our own county, what happens if we get full and Macon says no? And, you know, what do we do? We gotta, gotta try to at least think about what we're going to do to take care of our own.
Well, since, since all of our events at the chapel are on hold indefinitely at this point, until the situation clears up, we certainly do have the space if we needed to use that as a preliminary testing site, a place where folks could come through for drive-through testing, what have you, if that would be a means of eliminating some exposure risk for our healthcare professionals, then I don't think that that would be an issue for us to be able to make use of that space.
One of the things that I think speaks to exactly what y'all were talking about here is, the mayor and I both got an email from Larry Hanson, Executive Director of GMA, this afternoon, and tomorrow morning at 8:30, all mayors and city managers around the state have been invited to a telephone conference with Dr. Carlos Del Rio, who is an emery infectious disease expert, and he actually shared some stuff on a teleconference last week that was, that was excellent, and they're gonna, GMA is going to bring him back tomorrow morning at 8:30 to give some more detail in his presentation. And what Mr. Hanson said in the email was that many of you are taking actions now, and many of you are discussing similar measures, if actions are to be taken now is the time, callers will have an opportunity to ask Dr. Del Rio questions, so that may be, we could ask him something like that, what would be the best way for us locally to plan for that based on this, this area, and this room, and these facilities that we have.
Well, I want to be advised for us to really listen to the health professionals and the EMA, you know, let them come to us and tell us about what we need, I'm pretty sure we have open arms, whatever it takes.
It's got to be communication.
Whatever it takes, instead of we going out there, you know, shotgunning by ourselves, you know, we got to wait.
I'm not real sure, I'm not real sure the state would even allow you to open your own-
I hope we communicate with the hospital, and they have to tell them, you know, maybe this could be done, what do you think?
I'm not real sure that the state would even allow us to open our own isolation facility at this point in time, but it may down the road, you know, I'm, I'm, I may be overly optimistic that we may start to get back to normal around five or six weeks from now, but it may get worse before it gets better, obviously, so. But I will share with y'all what we hear from Dr. Del Rio tomorrow, and I will have a conversation with Councilman Reynolds and Mr. Couch, to see what might be available out there for us to go ahead and start thinking in that vein.
He would need to help Mike, because he may have to talk to the board and-
Right, and maybe even DBHDB if some of those buildings were going to be used, so.
Wouldn't be up to us to say.
Well, I'm thinking that, honestly, you know, I'm thinking that that would be their safe haven for the chapel.
I'd wondered about that, too.
Their first, their safe haven for staff, and any clients that they needed to move out and into another area before, we could just say that that would be a good place for us. So the city would have to come up with an alternate site, because they, they really don't have any other buildings that are available.
So in speaking to that, the North Central Health Department District, the Health Department Board, they are constantly meeting, I think we met about a week or so ago, so they are actually putting, or rolling out things as to what you're speaking to right now, Colin Duke and, is it Wayne Johnson, is this his name, are making sure the updates go out every day, two and three times a day. But hopefully, we will sit down, all the stakeholders at the table, Mr. Chambers that you're asking about, and start to discuss this as we go on. We're just trying to be proactive right now, put something in place, measures to make sure we're guiding ourselves by. Also, you know, I really want to thank Commissioner Craig, we've kind of reached out and gave each other some olive branches, and it takes real leadership in times like this, and I thank him for his leadership today, stepping up to the plate to be able to let our community know, these are the precautions that we're trying to stay on the federal, state, and local guidelines with, and to make sure that we are in strict adherence to. So even with that, you know, we want to let the residents know that we are here for your safety, as Mr. Mullins just said, we're here to make sure that you all get everything that you need, that we can possibly do to help keep everybody safe. And so I want to say thank you to council as well, because you all have been most cooperative, along with the commissioners, and if we continue to work together, I think we all will get to the destination we want to reach eventually, it's a long time coming, we always know things get worse before they get better, but in the same token, we're going to strive to help push it along, to make it a good and smooth transition. So, anybody else have anything to say?
Madam Mayor, if I could put this before the council, I know that other cities throughout the state of Georgia have allowed for their restaurants that have consumption on premises permits to allow package to go during this particular period of time. As you know, many of our small, community-owned restaurateurs have a lot of inventory on hand right now. They keep this inventory on hand because of, or student population, because they expect a lot of people to be going out, enjoying themselves, dining out, and there is a risk of spoilage, particularly among some of the beer and wine inventory, and there's a lot of money tied up in that inventory. I spoke to a restaurateur earlier today that has between $5,000 and $6,000 tied up in beer and wine, which could expire in the next 30 to 40 days. So what I would like to ask this board to consider would be the possibility of allowing for package-to-go sales with food orders from our local restaurateurs, it would help them to, again, eliminate some of that excess inventory that they have, and try to give them some bit of a break in this unprecedented situation. The restaurateurs I've spoken to are seeing an 80% to 90% drop in revenue, and any way that they could recoup any part of what they have currently tied up in stock would be beneficial to them. So in short, I would ask that we allow beer and wine package-to-go sales for all restaurants with valid consumption on premises licenses.
Mr. Jordan, is that something we can address tonight, or that has to-
Well, I don't, first of all, this is an emergency call meeting, of course, and the statute requires that we be limited to agenda that's posted out. I'm not, you know, I'm just not sure, having you just raised this, I'm not sure that we can do that, depending on what-
They did it in Fulton, they did it in Atlanta.
Help state, you got that.
What the state would tell us, whether or not we could do it. I'd be glad to.
It's being done in Atlanta and Fulton County, you might want to take a look at what they're doing.
Yeah, there may be, and they very well be authorization to do.
Yeah.
I just can't tell you that.
I think they're doing it in Athens, have to look into it.
And it's not drinks to go.
No.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it is, it would be-
Sealed containers.
Seal containers.
Yeah.
What you say, sealed container, what you talking about?
Cans and bottles.
Yeah, of beer, mainly beer.
Of beer.
I don't know that necessarily wine may be included, but it's certainly not selling bottles of vodka and all that. That stuff's going to keep, but I can't see a inventory that, you know, you're already talking about, like he was just saying, 80% to 90% loss in revenue, and then you don't even think about, and it goes beyond that. We had a restaurant earlier that had on Facebook that they had excess ground beef, and they actually were, you know, trying to sell some of that ground beef. There's a lot of stuff that's going to go bad if it just keeps sitting, and that is one of them. Craft beers have a, an age, or a-
They do expire.
Yeah, expiration date.
So what about, we just allow open containers, that they could take it and go with it?
Driving?
Well, what's the difference, would pass a law, a different law, if they put it in the-
Yeah, I mean, to me-
I'm saying, it's all I'm saying.
Yeah, but if it's sealed, it would be, to me, no different than going into a package store, convenience store, grocery store, whatever, and coming back out with it.
Precisely.
This would be an order to where you ordered two sandwiches from a restaurant, and they brought that out, and you wanted to get four beers with it.
I'm just saying, where most, most restaurants will open your beer, where they don't have to open it, you can carry it with you, that's what I was saying. And in the other case, you tell me you bought some food, you just buy it in packets, don't buy your beer and go on.
It's not necessarily-
I'm just saying, if you just don't open, I ain't saying nothing about opening it.
Right.
I might have said it wrong, but that's all I'm saying, maybe we can get around by just saying package-to-go, you can go with it, you know, open container, that's what I'm saying, but not really open it.
That's a new one on me, Mr. Mullins.
That one, that one, that one needs a little bit more explanation.
Well, what you going to do about the wine, they don't sell the wine, they look at that?
Take it home and open it.
Big bottle wine?
Some of them-
Oh, they don't have small bottles.
Some restaurants do have the small bottles of wine.
Okay, well, you know, Mr. Jordan has already shared with us, we have the key to the agenda, so that'll be a discussion at a later point in time, we will discuss it, Mr. Reynolds.
I'll get an answer by end of the hour.
Okay.
Thank you, Jimmy.
GMA, of course, you know, the current rules are always, you can take an uncoordinated bottle of wine out of restaurants.
As long as it's-
I don't know if they're wine, I don't know if wine-
It has to be reconnected.
Or not, I don't know about it. Beer.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, if there's nothing else to discuss, no other questions, comments? All right, need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn, backup.
All right, meeting adjourned.